To is to pledge allegiance, so if do we have a flag?
Behind Megan.
Oh, there it is. Okay, I'm going to stand. You can stand if you wish. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Is that a I have you on twice. Did you join again? Are you?
We have a kitty. Are we set with Isetta or not?
Isetta, you're on.
Yeah, finally left me back in.
Okay.
Tina, are we set?
We are good.
Good. I will ask for a motion to approve the agenda. Jason and Paul, any discussion? All in favor? John?
Yes.
Linda?
She said yes.
Tina?
Yes.
Paul?
Yes.
Jason?
Yes.
Isetta?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion is carried. The first presentation tonight, well, the only presentation is Bob, you're presenting budget information. So I'll turn it over to Robert Megan, Assistant Superintendent for Business and Operations.
Thank you, Cindy. Sorry, a little technical problem here trying to have documents ready and be able to see at the same time. So we do have a couple of items to discuss tonight in reference to the budget and where we are in that process. And the first one I'd like to talk about is the estimates that we currently have for state aid based on the governor's proposal that was sent out in January. So I'm going to attempt to share a document from that right now for you. And are you able to see that? Okay?
Yes, I am.
Okay, so basically what I've done here is I've taken in the first column of numbers, we of course have the budget that we are currently operating under 2021 and a little over a year ago, I'm sorry, a little less than a year ago when we adopted a budget, the estimates that we had for state aid at that time that we built our current budget on. And basically, if you look here, our total state aid for this year was estimated to be at a little over $20.1 million. The second column shows our current estimates, again, based on the governor's executive proposal from January. And I've broken it apart by all the different categories, but it gets really, really tricky this year because you've heard me talk for years about all the different categorical aids, our BOSI's aid, our textbook aid, et cetera. And the proposal from the government kind of does away with a lot of those aids that have specific names to them and instead just gives one large category of aid that's called services aid. So if you look at the things that are highlighted in yellow, and we'll start right up here with the BOSI's aid. So when we built this year's budget, we estimated we'd get a little over 1.7 in BOSI's aid. But as you can see, I'm estimating no BOSI's aid for next year. And the same thing applies to our hardware and technology, our software library textbook, transportation aid. All of those, I've got zero estimated for this coming year because they have been combined into what's called this new line, the services aid. So this $3,270,141 replaces all these other numbers that were in the yellow. Down here, I've kind of given an explanation of that in this box here for you to see. Also new this year is two new lines that they are calling the local district funding adjustment and the COVID-19 supplemental stimulus. Now, the local district funding adjustment is the equivalent to what a number of years ago we had as a gap elimination adjustment. Basically, because the state is facing hard financial times, they're going to run formulas where they keep our foundation aid flat right where it is for this year. And they're going to let all the other formulas run so that our services aid comes through to offset these others that we had before. But then, once it's all added up, they're basically going to have a take back line where they're saying, okay, I'm going to pay you for the work you did for this, for this, for this, for this, but now pay me back a little bit more. And that's to the tune of $1,071,000. Very similar, as I said, how the gap elimination adjustment worked before. For this coming year, though, they are planning to supplement that loss we will have of $1,071,000 with a one-time plug of federal stimulus money called the COVID-19 supplemental stimulus. So these two numbers here actually wash each other out. What's important to take notice of, though, excuse me, is that we anticipate that this local district funding adjustment will not be a one-year take back. We could be in for a number of years of this, just as we did with the gap elimination adjustment or the GEA. We could be seeing similar take backs, possibly larger, possibly smaller, in future years. The piece that probably will not be there, though, is a one-year federal stimulus money to plug that hole. Things are pretty much the same from one year to the other. Just to review, high costs and private costs, excess aid, those are aids that we receive on services we pay for special education students. And those are not part of the services aid. They're still left as they are. We do have a slight decrease here in building aid from our current year. But I put a note here that basically our debt service is falling off by almost that exact same amount. And that's how we always try to finance our projects. We look at what our state aid is going to be. We look at what our future debt service costs will be, and we align them so that it's almost a wash every year. The bottom line is currently, I'm looking at a possible increase of about $340,000 over current year levels. Again, that's just an estimate at this time. There's a lot to be done at the state level before a final budget is adopted. One of the other things I always like to compare is what does our budget look like with revenues without building aid? Because as I said, building aid is supposed to go directly to debt service, so they go up and down together. And we do have that bump here. I'm sorry, I referenced 340 before. If you take into account the building aid, it's about 300. Are there any questions on these revenue estimates?
Bob?
Yes?
Cindy, I have a question. Go ahead. The, when we were talking about it at legislative at four county, this combining things, is that what they had talked about as the service costs being put together?
Yes, it's that that's services aid. It's no longer saying you're getting X dollars for transportation aid, you're getting X dollars for BOSI's aid for textbook. It's just combining them. It appears as though whatever formulas they use to come up with that combined aid is close to flowing off the old formulas because we're not really seeing, excuse me, a loss there.
Okay.
There are some districts that have, but we have not.
Okay. Thank you, Bob.
You're welcome.
So Bob, the, this state aid is their first estimate of what we might get, but it is not firm and contingent on the state's final budget. Is that what we're talking about here?
That's correct. This is the estimate based just off the governor proposing his state budget. Of course, it goes through both, both parts of the legislative branch. There's negotiating between the three parties, the governor and the two legislative branches, before they finally adopt an actual state budget. Hopefully before April 1st. That's the budget that will really drive what our true state aid will be.
Hey, Bob?
Yes?
Just quick, what's that do to the flexibility for spending? I'm assuming that if you received aid for hardware and technology, it had to be spent in hardware and technology. What kind of limitations have they put on this, this bulk state aid?
Has not been defined on the expenditure side to us yet. We don't have information on that.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. I would guess it would be similar, just they're not breaking it out separate. And to be honest, I think one of the reasons is there's been proposals by the governor over many years to limit or cap a lot of these categorical aids. So for example, as you know, when we spend more with BOSI's on aid eligible services, that can generate additional aid in future years. Every year, the governor kind of proposes to cap that number where it is. And even if you spend more in BOSI's, you're not going to get any more next year. My personal feeling and discussion I've had with other colleagues is that by grouping this all together, it makes it much easier for them to just put a cap on a number. This is your aid number regardless of if you spend more or not.
Looks to me like sleight of hand in the future. We're going to change categories and payments and, you know, I would rather have it defined and easy to, to me, that's easier to understand.
I, I agree.
It's not, it's not up to us, I guess.
No, it's not. Okay, I'm going to pull this down then. Bear with me one moment, and we're going to look at athletics proposed expenditures for next year. Okay, I have that up. Are you able to view that? Okay? Okay, I see Tina shaking her head.
Yeah, got it.
Okay, so similar format to what we reviewed a month ago in facilities and transportation. This is our current adopted budget at this point. So our total athletic budget for this year was $421,816. 2122 shows the proposed for next year. And I've got the change column as always. Really, the only significant change in number you see is right here. An increase in athletic director salary, and that's due to the fact that the administrator that is the athletic director, in previous years, we had that position as a shared position with an, with a assistant principal. So therefore, half of the salary was paid out of athletics and half was paid out of building administration. I do try to give you an idea every year of what we're looking at as far as potential equipment purchases. And you can see, we're actually proposing to spend about $14,350 next year. It's a little bit less than we did this year. And specifically, I've outlined the pieces of equipment that we would like to purchase. This battery-powered disinfecting machine. So what this is, is it's a big, almost like a sprayer that will be able to go into areas such as like the wrestling room or something like that and be able to sanitize it quickly, a large area. Be honest, we're looking at it as part of our athletics budget, but we probably will be able to apply it to other areas in the building if needed. But the purpose is for a large area disinfection in a quick manner. We also are looking to get a new scores table for our indoor events for athletics. And for the third year in a row, we're starting out as our first draft here, looking to get a used golf cart specifically for athletics to be able for supervisors in a certain situation if they need to move around quick or possibly if we have someone who needs some help with access, they might be able to ride it across there. It has not made the cut due to budget constraints the last couple of years, but at this point, we have built it in there. And about the only thing left on here was the note I already mentioned about the salary. Any questions on the athletic proposed expenditures?
Yeah, under salaries, Bob, athletic coordinator, is that the middle school coordinator of athletics?
So the coordinator is each season, we have in certain years will appoint like one person that kind of is in charge of helping the athletic director and being there to oversee supervisors, things like that. We've probably had it for about 10 years or so. And if we look to fill those positions in the future, we would have the funding there for that.
We had that last year?
Yes, we did.
Who takes care of the middle school scheduling and of events?
That falls under the athletic director and his clerk, or his clerk typist that he has there in the office.
Okay, all right.
All right, I'm going to pull this down, and we're going to look at some other estimated expenditures.
All right, Bob, I had some questions.
Oh, I'm sorry. Go ahead.
On this, if you want to pop that back up, it's not required for my sake, but from the second line, it says SAL dash CONT managed slash middle school. What does that line mean? What does the SAL?
SAL stands for salaries. And that's contest management for the middle school. So contest management is things like scorekeepers, could be supervisors, not necessarily so much at the modified level. And scorekeepers, supervisors, those are, yeah. So basically, at the middle school level, you're talking about modified. So that's basically, basically be your score and timekeepers. We've got the same thing down here for high school, salaries for contest management at the high school. And that would include supervisors of the events also in that area.
I understand. Okay, down on equipment, high school. So actual expenditures in 1920 were $33,000. Our budget for this year is $20,000, and our proposed budget is 14.
Correct.
Yeah, did we have some monster purchase there back in 1920?
I believe, I believe that was the year. I'm not sure. I will tell you a couple of the major purchases we've had in the last few years. I'm not sure which one was when. We put a scoreboard up on the high school soccer field. We replaced the scoring system in the pool. And we did, I think it was just maybe this year, we've done lane dividers. Yes, they were large, large, mostly timing pieces. I don't remember which one we did in which year.
Okay, what's our actual expenditure for this year? To date, to date, do you know that one? It's not on the list.
I don't have it off the top of my head, and unfortunately, I don't have access to go into Wincap to look where we are year to date.
Okay, okay. And then the last, the very last line, material and supplies at the high school, another significant decrease. Well, not, no, actually not terribly significant, just 1,400.
Yes.
Can you address that one just a little bit?
I can't tell you specifically what the change is because I do get the request from the athletic director, but things that fall in that area are going to be basic supplies like baseballs, soccer balls, uniforms go in there, anything. So the difference between a material and supply versus equipment, it's equipment are big, large purchases that we anticipate will last a long time. They're not consumable over a couple of years. So anything that doesn't fall into the equipment that we need, that's a tangible item, would fall into the materials and supplies. Bats would fall in there. Replacement nets for soccer, things like that. If we looked at buying a new wrestling mat, that would fall into equipment.
Okay, that explains it to me. Thank you. It's nice to see that we can decrease some of those this year.
Yeah, and that's an area that will go up a little here and there or down, kind of depending on what, what uniforms in particular we might be coming up with on a cycle.
Bob, as I remember, to the, sometimes the athletic councils or whatever regulate what equipment you can use in a sporting event, such as the year the baseball bats were changed. Is that still the case?
Yeah, you broke up a little bit on what I heard, but I heard you referencing that there was a time when we had to buy a whole bunch of new baseball bats one year because they changed the safety features of them.
Yeah.
Yes, that's correct. And then that would cause us to make new purchases of material supplies in that year.
Yeah, okay.
Okay, what I have here now is our estimated expenditures in the area of special education. Excuse me, and this does not include specific teacher salaries per se because, of course, we are still in the process of going through staffing. These are all of the other things. So you see the general categories of equipment, contractual services, conference and travel, postage, and our big ticket items are the bottom two, of course, tuition charges and BOSI services. So tuition charges, as I've highlighted in the box or the information here, these are when we have students that have special needs that we need to place out of district. And we're sending them to an actual school that's not part of a BOSI's program. Maybe we're sending them to Norman Howard School or something like that, where we pay tuition directly to a school. We have to put it in the tuition area. The BOSI services also covers many costs for out-of-district place students. The difference being it's when we're sending them to a program that is part of a BOSI's. Also in the BOSI services line is when we have services that maybe are rendered to our students who are in district that have special needs, but things like physical therapy, hearing assistance technology, things like that, where we don't necessarily have an employee on staff that offers those services, but we do subscribe to a BOSI service to get them. So those are all lumped in there together. We do have quite a bit of change in these areas this coming year. I have to keep moving everyone's picture out of the way so I can see on my own screen. You see that our BOSI's is going up significantly. Now, you also notice, though, that our private tuition is also going down significantly. The net change from our current to our proposed at this time of a little over $430,000, that's almost exclusively due to out-of-district placements for special education students. And I did provide you here that last year in this tuition area, we had eight students that we were paying tuition on. This year, the reason it went down 300 and some thousand dollars was because we only have three students where we're paying tuition to private schools. When we look down here at the BOSI's line, our current year that we're operating under, we had 23 students placed into BOSI's programs. What we're building for next year, we're estimating off of 27 specific students at this time. Questions on these estimates at this point?
So just, that's all based on the students we have right now or we know we will have?
That is correct. It's based on students that we, we have. Those, those numbers are linked to specific student names, yes? Yes?
Just so, just so I'm understanding it correctly, and I want to make sure I do. So the difference between 23 and 27 is four students, so that those, that those four students account for the 749,000?
The majority of it. There's also going to be, like I said, so maybe we're paying a little bit more in physical therapy in district or hearing assistance, et cetera. But we do know that our largest costs are always associated with the out-of-district placements. And it's not uncommon for an out-of-district placement to run well over $100,000 by the time they pick up services and that other BOSI's placement also.
Yeah, I remember you telling us that. It's just that the four, the number four caught me off guard because it's almost $200,000 a student.
It is. And I can't tell you specifically tying to like one student per se what the increase is. I could probably dig into that some and work with special ed office to get more specifics on that. But again, some of it's going to be increased costs on services rendered in district.
And just one more quick question. And this might be common knowledge, it's just something that I don't know. So in a year, in a year that state aid is still up in the air like this year, let's just assume that there's going to be a cut to some of our state aid associated with students with special needs. Does BOSI's ever try to help in that situation with a lesser premium for a program if we, if we don't aid? I mean, or do we, are we just the, the last line, I guess, for, for them, you know? Do we take the hit and still pay them the full amount, I guess?
Pretty much. The short answer is no. Because please remember, when with BOSI's in general being the Board of Cooperative Educational Services, they are basically a conglomeration of all the school districts in that BOSI's. So when they set up their programs, whether it's running a central business office, running a print shop, or running a special education classroom, what they do is they look at the staff and then associated materials, supplies, equipment, all the costs associated with running that program. And then they're pretty much going to divide it up by the number of students that are in that program. So their, their costs are pretty fixed. And of course, if at the end of the year, they ended up charging more than what it cost, we, of course, always as our, part of our revenue budget, we get a little refund from the previous year on BOSI's. So if they were to, they can't really knock down the cost because they wouldn't be able to pay for the program. Does that make sense?
Yeah, but, you know, I mean, it just seems as though they'd be an equal participant in state cuts because when we, when we're affected by the cuts, we can't fund programs either. So I just think there needs to be a little equality there, and that's nothing that we can handle, but.
Sure, but remember when you say they, they is us. BOSI's is us.
BOSI's is us.
I mean, we're, we're, we're a piece of, of the BOSI's.
Which I, no, I understand that. It's just just tough with, with state aid, the possibility of state aid being cut. just tough with, with state aid, the possibility of state aid being caught.
And. Ab- absolutely.
And we're the ones that are ultimately affected. Our students, I should say.
Bob?
Yes.
In that case, say fewer districts use BOSI's, so their costs, and we would continue to use them, then our costs would go up because they still have the same costs, and then it's just divided as to the number of students participating. Is that right?
Um, yes and no. So there's a whole process that we go through, we're going through it right now, where we inform BOSI's of what we intend to purchase for next year.
Right.
They give us estimates. And so they, they basically give us a cost for a service, and that's pretty much fixed in. That is what we're going to pay for next year.
Okay, okay.
And if it ends up that they don't, I mean, if rare extremes, if they couldn't run a program anymore, they might have to cancel it. We wouldn't be able to send it, send a student there and then we wouldn't pay for it.
Right.
They give us right now their estimate of what they expect because we've been communicating with them, as have all the other school districts, about what we anticipate to need for next year. So they build, just like we're building a budget, they're building budgets, and that's how they send us what the cost will be for next year. And again, if there's excess, some of that gets refunded the following year.
Okay, thanks.
However, the, the caveat is that if they can't fund it, if they don't have the program, because as an IEP student, we have to then fund it totally probably at a higher price. Because we will have to get an expert in the field and satisfy the IEP, so it'll cost more. So BOSI's does pay money because it shares the services. Although, I know what, I know what Jason's hoping for. Sorry.
Yes.
That being said, BOSI's is they're a state program, right? Yeah, you say it's run by our, our school districts, but it is the state funded. Their budget goes to the state. The state tells them what their budget will be. Am I right?
Um, no, the, the state doesn't tell them what their budget will be. They do get some state funding, very, very little. Ninety-some percent of all of their revenue is what the component districts pay in for services. So their, their money comes from all the school districts buying services.
Bob?
Yes.
I have a question. It's not really.
I was confused because I know some of their employees are considered state employees.
Um, yeah, but they, they're, they're not part of the state budget. They have their own separate budget, just like we do as a school district where, um, you know, they get revenue from various places, but again, ninety-some percent of that comes from component districts.
Bob?
Yes.
I have a question that's not really, it's, it's tangentially related to our budget, but once there's an idea of what federal monies might be in play in terms of coming to states for schools, hopefully that's going to happen before April first and the budgets finalize. In talking to other financial officers in other districts, is there any inkling as to how that's even going to be distributed?
I would guess, and this is just a guess, I would guess for federal stimulus money, what they're reflecting on that current run would be what we would probably get. If we got any more, I don't think it would be large.
Okay.
And again, we anticipate that could only be for the one year possibly.
I know also that as a district, we've had costs due to COVID that we certainly didn't anticipate when the budget was developed last year. And that can be quite a sizable figure. I know I'm not going to ask for that now, but I, I'm curious as to what it is at some point.
Yeah, we, we touched on that back in our October meeting, and I will tell you, we have probably not had much of an increase since then.
Oh, okay.
Because our cost for PPE, et cetera, we pretty much had bought a lot of that upfront and we haven't had to replenish a lot yet. Excuse me, as far as cleaning and sanitizing, I mean, those are things that we would normally be, be buying anyways. It's really just being more conscientious with realigning our staff and their efforts on a daily basis, maybe redirecting more sanitizing versus just cleaning.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Bob, I got about three questions.
Okay.
Line two contractual district, it went from seventeen thousand in actual expenditures in nineteen twenty, with our budget up thirty thousand. So what was the big jump there, sir?
Well, my guess is our actual expenditures in nineteen twenty were going to be a little bit lower maybe than what we budgeted due to part, part-time closure. There was a, a large piece that we've had to increase in this area over the last few years has been bear with me, I just blanked for a second. Um, that's, I was thinking that's where we had our translations. I would have to look at the actual expenditures in nineteen twenty to, to compare, and I certainly can do that and distribute that out to you. I don't, I don't know that off the top of my head, and unfortunately, with, I, I can't be connected to the financial software and this at the same time.
Okay, well, what are contractual, what, what line is that? What does that cover, please?
I'm, I'm looking to see if I can pull up the individual things. Um, it could be some consultants for various things. I can send you details of specifically all the things that are in the contractual. I, 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 I just on top, top of my head, I can't answer that. I apologize. There's, there's a whole list of things that I get from the special education department. And normally in a normal setting, I would have a whole box here with me that I could pull out, but I don't have that access.
Okay, no worries. I'd be interested, but.
Sure, I will absolutely get that out to you by the end of the week.
Okay, I don't want to hold up the meeting anymore. That's fine. But just to help me out, what, I'll go down to line five T S O L. What is that an abbreviation for, please?
Uh, it's it's, it's, it's changed names so many times. I apologize for the abbreviation. Teacher, teaching of English. Megan or Mike, if you're the one you want to hop in with what the current abbreviation is.
I, I think.
ESL.
Teaching English to students of other languages.
Thank you. That's exactly what it is. It's been called ESL, it's been called ENL, all various different things.
Okay, got it.
And that's like where in their contractual there, that's where we do account for when we have to pay for translators. Many times we need them, you know, just for even a parent teacher conference to help get through a report card, something like that. That is, as you can see, that did increase because we did have, going back to nineteen twenty, we did have a, a large increase in those types of needs, specifically translations. But that's not part of that other contractual.
Okay, last question is down on a, um, for the tuition charges, which is the line, though you've already addressed it, it's the second to the last line on your document. So I'm, apparently those aren't linear. In other words, there may be different schools which charge different tuitions, because I just did a simple math and five eighths of the fifty-three thousand doesn't come up to three nineteen, it comes up to about three fifty. So we're losing about, we have to pay another eleven thousand for those each, for those three students.
Correct. It, it, it's, yes. Various programs are going to be totally differently priced. They don't, it's not linear, as you've said.
Okay, thanks, Bob.
You're welcome. Okay, I'm going to pull this down in the last document to review this evening. If I'm able to pull that up, I was having a little trouble getting this one to show up. Is our funding and use of reserves policy, which as you know, we review this every year about this time, and we do update it annually every year in June. And I'm going to go through this fairly quickly. Basically, what I did was I took the one that was adopted in June, and I've added some discussion points for us to consider that we'll need to adjust as we go into this coming June. And what I've done is if it's changed, I put it in red font. So I'm just going to quickly go through our various reserves that we have. Our first one is our tax surcharge area reserve. As most of you know, this is a reserve that we can only have money in if we have potentially outstanding tax surcharge area claims. And this past August, we had a number of them come in. The board funded the reserve for our potential liability. Uh, back in December, we got determinations on most of those. So what we did was we paid back the back taxes we had to, and any extra money associated with those properties was returned back to fund balance. And all that's remaining in there is one potential claim. Once we get a final determination on that, which could be this year, may not be, at that point, we will follow the same process. If we have something we need to pay back, we'll pay it off. And any remaining funds will be returned to fund balance as we cannot hold balance in there if we do not have a potential liability. Our workers' compensation revie, or reserve is one that we actually use to fund every year what our costs are into our consortium. Our ideal balance is equivalent to one year's contributions. And basically, our contributions for this coming year in our consortium are going to be down just a little bit from what they are now. And I apologize, we actually don't fund our full amount every year, but that's the amount we want to have reserved. So because our contributions for next year will be slightly less than this year, we will need to take a small amount out of that in order to stay in accordance with our ideal balance. And that is one that we actually don't move the money in June if we're taking it out. We need to do it within sixty days of the close of the fiscal year, which would mean we'll do that in July or August as we do every year. Unemployment reserve is one that we do heavily rely on to fund whatever we spend out of our budget. And it's, it's one that was quite large, and we reduced it over the past couple of years because our unemployment costs had gone down so significantly. You can see back in twelve thirteen, we were paying $26,000, it went up to fifty-seven. We had a number of spikes, and in seventeen eighteen, we didn't pay anything for unemployment. We didn't pay anything in eighteen nineteen. This past year, we started paying some a little bit again, paid a little over three thousand. But this year, to date, and we're only, you know, we've still got four or five months left of the year, we've already spent over sixty-seven thousand in unemployment costs this year. What we will need to do going forward is when we built this year's budget, we appropriated that we take up to twenty thousand out to pay for it. So the sixty-seven thousand we spent so far, twenty thousand of that came right out of the reserve. And the other forty-seven plus whatever we get this year additional, we'll have to pay out of our, our regular general fund. But because the costs increased so much, I think we may want to consider looking at this reserve for at least the next few years. We used to have it where we kept aside one percent of payroll in this reserve. And when we reduced it a couple of years due to very little, if any, costs, we reduced it to a quarter of a percent. It's my recommendation that as we come into June, it was, we still see our unemployment costs coming in at a high rate. We may want to look to increase that back to one percent of payroll costs. That would mean we'd have to make a transfer into it in June from fund balance.
Uh, what caused?
Sorry?
What caused the big spike this year in this wildly higher than anything we've had?
Um, a lot of it, it's basically COVID related. And remember, it doesn't necessarily mean that it's, you know, that we cut a teacher position that caused the unemployment. It could be things like not needing substitutes as much. It could be things like people that were our employee, maybe they left, went someplace else and got laid off from that job, but because we had been their employer previously, we still are on the hook for some unemployment with it. It's largely COVID related.
Thank you.
Yep. Capital building reserve, you all are very familiar with, of course, established by the taxpayers to pay for the local share of capital projects. Um, we currently have about six hundred and fifty thousand dollars in there. We do have room to still fund that before we hit the maximum that the community authorized back in two thousand seventeen. We need to try to fund this aggressively once we've met all our other expectations. As right now, as, as you know, we on our last capital project put down a very large piece of money out of the capital reserve. Right now, we only have six hundred and fifty-eight thousand dollars towards the next one to cover local share. We had planned to put some money into it this past summer, but when we found out at the last minute that the state was holding back twenty percent of our August and September, July payments, um, that reduced the amount of fund balance we had left from last year, and we weren't able to fund a number of our reserves how we wanted. Now we are receiving some of that twenty percent that was withheld now, which is actually a little extra revenue in this year. So it's my hope that we'll be able to again, be able to fund these reserves that we had to pass on last year. Capital bus reserve, as you know, that pretty much replenishes itself. We take the aid from all of our previous bus purchases, and we look at what that is every year as it comes in, and we have the board take action to put that money right back in the reserve so that we have money there for our purchases in the future. So on your next board meeting agenda in March, there will be the resolution to put this year's state aid from bus purchases in previous years into this reserve to keep funding it. Insurance reserve, we abolished a number of years ago. Liability reserve was one that the Board of Education, after getting information from our auditors as well as our insurance carriers, felt we needed to fund over a number of years. So we were putting ninety thousand dollars in per year, working towards an ID, ideal balance of three percent of our budget. So we have finally, after a number of years, we have reached our, our full funding on that, as I got down here. We reached our ideal balance. We're going to have to make small adjustments on an annual basis. As the budget increases from year to year, that means our ideal balance number will go up a slight bit. But unless we need to tap into it for a major expenditure of some type, hopefully we won't need to make major contributions to that going forward for a while. The employee benefit accrued liability reserve, also known as EBLR. This is where we have money set aside with a spreadsheet that's updated every summer. It basically covers our potential liability with paid time off that employees have that carry a value. So many times in contracts, there are, at retirement, there are buyouts for unused sick days or something like that. So we determine what that potential liability is, and we have money set aside to pay that. And basically, every year, we anticipate we'll have some to pay as people retire, et cetera. And we put a number in the budget, we estimated that as maybe twenty thousand dollars this year. So we plan to take twenty thousand out of this reserve to pay that. If we pay more, we'll take a little more out of the reserve. If we pay less, we won't take the full 20,000 out. And then over the summer in July and August, once all the accounts have closed for this year. The spreadsheet will be balanced up, we'll know what our new liability is. And probably August or so, we will tweak that balance, could be up or could be down. But to align with what our potential liability is. Retirement contribution reserve, there's actually two reserves in one here. For years, we were able to fund for the state retirement system and just a couple of years ago. The state passed that we could start saving in a reserve for teachers retirement also as a sub fund of the current one. So I've got our current balance listed here as of the end of January. We have about 649,000 for the ERS reserve and a little over 200 from, for TRS. I want to point out that these are reserves that also we were unable to fund to the level we wanted last year. In June, we had planned to put $500,000 into the ERS section. We could only put 384 because again, we didn't have the excess fund balance due to the state holding back on our aid. This, the ERS side, we really need to aggressively look to fund. Because this is an area that we take a sizable chunk out every year. We appropriate basically the majority of our retirement system bill. For the ERS out of this reserve. And you can see our totals here run around three to $400,000, goes up or down depending on contribution rates. So we've only got a couple of years left of being able to access that to pay our bills. That's why we need to aggressively fund this one back, which was our hope last year. Didn't happen to the degree we wanted. And unfortunately, we're also looking to put around 200,000 into the TRS side of that reserve. There's a limit to how much we can put in there and we were unable to do that either this past year. Our maximum was $205,000, but we couldn't put it in. Again, this is just a kind of an update conversation in the meantime. Until we get towards June, where we'll look to finalize some of these decisions. Are there any specific questions?
I don't have any more comment. I should be done.
Thank you.
I thought our reserve policy is well done. It's unfortunate that we don't get the funding to put into the reserves because they are helpful. For the general benefit of the general fund and kids in general. So it's just too bad that we have these takeaways and take backs from the state.
Okay, in a month from now, our next step in the budget process was, is we will have a first full draft. About expenditure and revenue side. To see where we stand at that point. That's all I have.
Bob, that'll be current expenditures to date?
In the March, no, that'll be our estimated expenditures for next year.
Okay, when can we start looking at current expenditures?
Um.
That we get on the treasury report too.
Yeah, we, we get those and yeah, those, those come out in the treasures report, of course, there's always a couple of months lag on that. And we are going to actually at that same meeting, we're gonna do a little talking through of how to read a treasures report, what are some of the things in there too?
Right. Okay, thank you very much.
Thanks Bob.
As always, you do a great job, Bob. Moving on to the consent agenda. Motion please to approve the consent agenda.
So move.
Linda and a second. Tina, okay. Discussion, questions? Okay, hearing none. If, I'll take the role here. For approval, John?
Yes.
Linda?
Yes.
Tina?
Yes.
Paul?
Yes.
Jason?
Yes.
Izetta?
Yes.
Motion is carried. We move then to. Good news. Do anyone, does anyone have anything they want to share in? No. We had a lot of them at our last meeting, all do you have some? Did I see your hand go up?
Yeah.
All right.
We got student rotary, so the. Rotary student of the month. And Del Francisco for grade four. Every student of the month for grade seven was Lily. Now strangely, oh, if that's the way it's pronounced. Daughter of Tony and Shelley, so that's seventh grade. Nice article in the. Lakeshore News article about our. Strategic plan update. Last week, our last meeting, I talked about the student council at the high school with a food drive. So another nice article in the paper about that and that will go through the end of this month. Learned by the student council again, really cool at the high school. Anybody recognize this guy?
We certainly do.
The scary photo. With our superintendent might get walk at Rotary meeting, so that was a nice update on that one. Sports news of the century. Quentin gets his thousandth point, that was a nice write-up and photo in that.
Yay for Quentin.
Sports, lots of sports updates, of course, so let me just give it a couple of highlights. We managed, the bowlers managed to beat Red Creek each time we play them. Just wanted to mention that Silas Jason had a 258 high game with a 579 series. There's a bowling out of his mind that night. Also a track, we've had indoor track and swimming, indoor track. Went to the Pinnacle Athletic Complex in Victor. Couple of highlights, Clayton Reed, first place for the shot put. And Hannah Stubble was third place in the 55 meter hurdles. And basketball, I just wanted to highlight, so North Rose Women beat Lions. And Lisa Waterman had 24 points, she followed it up the next with another 15 points in the next game. Also in bowling, wanted to mention that. The North Rose Coopers, so this is a. This is a ballathon sort of a thing or three, three, three different schools, Red Creek, North Rose, Wocat and Clyde Savannah. North Rose Wocat came in second in the, in the women. And I'm sorry, third in the women, second in the men. And then another indoor track meet again back at Victor, Lisa Meyer, six, sixth place for the 55 meter hurdles. A third place in the 55 meter dash. Morgan Tompkins, second place in the high jump. And again, Hannah Stubble, though you heard her name before, or again, a third place in the 55 meter hurdles. That's my sports update, that's what I've got for tonight, thanks.
Anyone else have anything? All right, good, thank you very much. It's not here, but this is the point where Michael, we turn to you and have, do you have any? Updates or things you'd like to tell the board?
Yeah, just a quick reminder, Paul had mentioned the strategic plan, so next Friday. March 5th, we will be getting together with the committee to take a look at our strategic plan that expires in 2021. And we're gonna undertake the visioning piece of that and really look to map out our blueprint. For the next several years, so we're excited about that opportunity. We're, we're looking forward to work we're gonna do with the consultant that we have, that's gonna lead us through that exercise. Erica Ebert, I know you've heard her name several times throughout the year. Based on the training she's worked on with Megan and several staff members. We're excited to share the input that we've received from the community as to what they're looking for. As far as our next strategic plan. And you know, we're hoping that by the end of the day on Friday, we have. Both a blueprint in terms of our timeline as to what it's gonna take to revise our strategic plan. As well as some implementation deadlines. So we're really looking forward to that. I did mention last week or last time that Megan and I were invited to our 100, 100 day celebration with Mr. Mars class. What a great job that they're doing in terms of the reading and writing and how they're stretching their words as well. So there's a lot of good things happen down at the elementary level as well as at the middle and high school level. For me, really, the bulk of our work is, is what you're seeing through Bob's production tonight. You know, we're focused on that budget process, we're having the conversations right now. For where we're going in terms of staffing and what our priorities are going to be. And the timing is perfect because again, the work that we're doing with the strategic planning committee. Is gonna coincide with, as Bob said, presenting the, the first draft of the entire budget next month. So it's been busy, but it's been good work. And believe it or not, it's crazy to say this, but our fall sports, fall season two starts next week on Monday. So we have a little bit of overlap between our winter season and our fall too. So we're excited to see our volleyball teams get underway next week. And our athletic director, who is currently at a wrestling match tonight. Has been doing a great job of laying things out and planning for what that overlap looks like. So it's been a busy time here, but very rewarding time and, and again, a lot of good things happening.
Thank you, very good. At this time. We. Need to add an item to the agenda. So I would like a motion to. And second, to add an item to the agenda, please. Thank you Tina and. And Jason, thank you Jason. Any discussion? All in favor of adding an item to the agenda? John?
Yes.
Linda?
Yes.
Tina?
Yes.
Paul?
Yes.
Jason?
Yes.
Izetta?
Yes.
Thank you, motion is passed. The. The motion that I'll be asking for a. A motion to. To approve a letter of resignation. To this agenda. Is there a motion? Once we have the motion, I'll read the, the resolution. Motion, Linda and Jason. Discussion. All right, here is the resolution. Be it resolved that the Board of Education, upon recommendation of the Superintendent of Schools. And pursuant to education law. Accepts the resignation of Melissa Petracola as principal and all other positions held within the district. Effective February 22, 2021. Any discussion? Then I'll. Call the role, John, do you approve? I didn't, John, was that a yes or no?
Yes.
That was a yes? Linda?
Yes.
Tina?
Yes.
Paul? Paul?
Yes.
Jason?
Yes.
Izetta?
Yes.
Thank you, motion is passed. In a moment, I'll be asking for a resolution to go into executive session. And to those of you who are visiting and in on us tonight. Once the motion is passed to go into executive session. Tina, will you give the directions of, of how to either stay or how to get back in with us? We do expect to possibly do some business when we return.
I will ask that everyone leave the meeting, Mr. Paul, and do you have an idea about precisely how long before they should come back to join the meeting to check back?
I, I would say probably 20 to eight, quarter to eight, that time range.
Okay, at this time, I would ask that all the guests please leave the meeting.
Well, I need to get a resolution.
Oh, I'm sorry.
A motion, not a resolution. So a motion please to go into executive session. To discuss the employment history of a specific employee, John and Jason. A discussion? All right, John?
Yes.
Linda?
Yes.
Tina?
Yes.
Paul?
Yes.
Jason?
Yes.
Izetta?
Yes.
Motion is carried, thank you, we'll be going into executive session.
I resume the report. You want me to admit everyone now?
Yes.
I believe that's everyone.
All right, thank you, welcome back, we're back in open session. At this time, I would like a motion to add an item to the agenda. Motion please, Jason and Paul, any discussion? All right, in favor, John?
Yes.
Linda?
Yes.
Tina? Tina?
Yes, she said yes.
All right, Paul?
Yes.
Jason?
Yes.
Izetta? Motion carries. At this time, I would like a motion. To approve a written agreement between the superintendent and employee of the district. And I will read that, that resolution as soon as I have the motion on the floor. To add, so a motion to add, Izetta and Linda. This is the resolution. I resolve that the Board of Education of North Rose Wocat Central School District. Approves the written agreement between the Superintendent of Schools. And an employee of the district executed on February 22, 2021. Is there any discussion? Then for approval, John?
Yes.
Linda?
Yes.
Tina?
Yes.
Paul?
Yes.
Jason?
Yes.
Izetta? Isetta?
Isetta?
All right, thank you.
Yes.
All right, that motion carries. Uh, there be, be no uh, further business for the board tonight. A motion to adjourn.
Tina?
Jason and Tina, read. All right, any discussion? All right, all in favor, John?
Yes.
Linda?
Yes.
Tina?
Yes.
Paul?
Yes.
Jason?
Yes.
Isetta?
Yes.
Motion is carried. We are adjourned. Thank you, everyone. Good meeting. Good night.
Take care. Bye bye.